Would the Camarillo Library Board please come to order? Could you call, roll?
Trustee Tremblay? Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Craven?
Here.
President Protim Kildee?
Here.
President Morgan?
Present. Could everyone please stand for a flag salute? Mr. Kildee, could you lead us in the flag salute?
Push your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. President.
Any public comments? I have no cards. Would anyone like to address the Camarillo Library Board on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move down to the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Consent calendar, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Now, move into the depart-- no departmental items tonight, huh?
No, Mr. President.
Okay. Do we have anyone here from the library?
Not this evening, Mr. President.
Okay. Comments from the board? Trustees? Seeing no comments, we'll adjourn.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene this meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District Board of Directors to order. Let the record reflect that all five directors are present. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. Let's move to the consent calendar where we have items A through E, respectively.
Move the approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a successful second, I believe. Please vote.
I turned my microphone off is what I did instead of voting.
And after great suspense, I can report to you that we have a five-zero unanimous vote on consent calendar. Just teasing. Let's move to item 4A, the CASA Voting Delegate item.
Yes, the city received a request from CASA to designate a voting delegate for their annual business meeting in August, and so that is before you. I'm not sure who's attending CASA or...
Guess we're gonna have to...
I know.
I'll be attending.
Who else? Mrs. Craven will be attending.
I'll be attending also.
Mr. Morgan will be attending.
But is the chair attending?
The chair is unable to attend because of a family commitment back on the East Coast.
Are you?
No good deed will go unpunished, Mrs. McDonald.
Well, Mike and I are attending, so we can't fulfill a request of one plus two.
I can let Charlotte do it.
I'll be there.
So, a delegate and an alternate.
Sure.
I would make the motion to appoint Mrs. Craven as our delegate and Mr. Morgan as our alternate.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any further comment?
No.
Please vote. All right, then that's adopted on a five-to-zero vote, if I'm reading the lights correctly. All right. At this point, we are going to recess the Sanitary District Board meeting until later this evening.
I will call this meeting of the Camarillo Successor Agency to order and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Public comments? Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the successor agency to the redevelopment agency on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the consent calendar, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Comments from board members? I thought we were council members.
We are.
Anyway, do any of you have any comments?
No.
Okay, comments from staff? No comments? We will recess now and we will reconvene in the council chambers at 7:30. So, I will call this meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order, ask the record to reflect that all council members are present, and ask if there are any amendments to this agenda.
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have no presentations, which gets us down to the consent calendar.
Move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second emotion.
There's a motion, a second to approve the consent calendar, please vote. We're now down to City Council. Item A, Veterans Memorial Monument Contract and Appropriation. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. I'll be presenting that if you can give me a moment. Okay, it's my pleasure to be presenting the Vietnam Veterans Memorial item to you tonight. As you know, in 2015, the city became a commemorative partner in the Department of Defense Vietnam War 50th Anniversary Commemorative Program. The city has now sponsored five of six events to thank and honor our veterans of the Vietnam War period for their service. The item before you is to consider issuing a contract to Vogue Sign Company for fabrication of the Camarillo Veterans Memorial Monument in Constitution Park. This Veterans Memorial Monument in Constitution Park will be the sixth and final event in the series and will be expanded to include plaques listing the names of fallen service members from the Camarillo-Somas area from World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Global War on Terrorism. Under the Uniformed Public Instruction Cost Accounting Act, staff received a quote from Vogue Sign Company for $25,688 for the fabrication of a port-in-place, single-sided, curved-aggregate concrete monument with incised lettering and a honed granite top. Plaques will be donated and installed by the American Legion Post 741 in conjunction with the Canale Mountain Memorial Park at no cost to the city. This is the area that the monument will go in behind our existing memorial. A little closer area, a little closer picture of the area. It will go again in this area right here, in this dirt that you're seeing there. Again, you can see the flag from the memorial that's to the west. This is a top view. It'll be 24 inches wide. As you can see, it does curve along the sidewalk and go back. This is a side view, which I'll have another explosion of for you. This shows you the side view. It's 55 and a half inches tall. There's a 30-degree angle. It has a kick plate and a incision at the side there, and it's 42 inches tall at the front. There's a four-inch area there that the band that will hold the, in honor of Camarillo's fallen heroes, which will be incised into that area. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Any questions? Mrs. McDonald?
The plaques themselves, once they're mounted on it, will it be flat or will they be raised?
It will be on that angle.
No, I meant the lettering will be raised.
The lettering will be raised, yes.
My concern is people climbing on it and sitting on it and getting caught on the edge of it. So, when, is it really a plaque or is it kind of low and...
It is a plaque, but Mr. Danny Crowe is here from the American Legion, and he might be able to fill us in a little bit more on the...
I have a card from Danny Crowe to speak on this item. Please state your own name for the record, please.
My name is Danny Crowe. I'm a member of, 35-year member of the Legion Post here in town and a lifelong resident of the city of Camarillo. To give you kind of a little bit of history here, one of our members at the post came up with the idea of doing the memorial that we see here, because there is no, the only memorial in the city that honors Vietnam veterans, just Vietnam, is over by the pool. So, we came up with this idea, and the original idea was to put it, Bob Garcia came up with, was to put the names in the back of the existing memorial that's down, that's already there. After several meetings with the committee, we decided that no one would ever see it unless they walk around behind it. So, this is where this idea came from. Now, what I've done, I've been in contact with Canale Mountain, and as you see, the five plaques there, the one on the left will be World War II, Korea, the next, the middle one would be blank right now, then Vietnam, and the current conflict that we're in. The one in the middle, since we do not have anyone confirm who perished, resident of Camarillo area that lost their life in World War I, we don't have any name to put up there. In talking to the people at Canale Mountain, what we decided we can do is on the center one, we can put something, "The city of Camarillo honors those who lost their lives in combat," however you want to word it, or we can put a gold star on it, however you want. In talking to people at Canale Mountain, they gave us a price of all five plaques, the total cost of around $1,000. It will be attached to the black granite, it will be attached to the top of the concrete. All the, everything will be installed by the people who make the plaques, so it will be sealed, so with silicone around it, so no water gets in behind it. And they will also, they will be bolted down. And so, this is where our idea for this thing came from. Since the last meeting we had, this last week, I've gotten approval from the Legion Post to go ahead and front the money for the plaques. We're just waiting to get the wording and everything else on it.
Her question was, on the plaques themselves, are the letters raised? And is there a chance that somebody will get caught on them somehow?
Or scratch them, break them off or...
I don't think so. I haven't seen it, but I'll get more information, report that back to the committee at our next meeting.
My only concern is, is I know where it sits, and I've been watching the kids at the concerts in the park, and they are all over that area. And while it's got a slope to it, I can picture people climbing on it. Whether it's the right thing to do or not, I can see it happening. I just don't want it to be ruined or to somebody to get hurt because they were to get caught on the metal. Is the gold piece around it metal, then, like a regular plaque?
It's going to be, I don't have a picture of the plaque.
The whole thing is bronze.
Yeah, it's a bronze plaque. Yep.
So, why does it look black in the middle?
This is the artist.
That's computer drawing.
Maybe that's what's confusing me. Well, the main thing is, you said you were gonna seal it, which will help, so there won't be a rough edge then. So, I think it's beautiful. I have no problem with it. I just want to make sure that it doesn't all get damaged or...
Also, they will be bolted to the concrete up there at any, also...
To the granite?
Pardon me?
They'll be bolted to the granite?
To the granite, yes, to the granite. But thank you. They'll be bolted to that, we seal with silicone, so water cannot get back in behind it. With the angle it's on, we're not, we don't think there's gonna be a problem with water standing on it causing any kind of erosion or anything. Also, one of the questions came up in the committee meeting, well, what happens if somebody comes in and steals them? Now, to my knowledge, there are no junk dealers anywhere in the state of California or in Mexico who will pay for those. Once it comes out with that, I don't know if it's gonna have serial numbers on the back or what, but they will not pay money for the value of the metal, so...
Okay. Is that all, Mr.?
One...
Mr. Morgan, you have a question?
Danny, you and I both remember the first plaque that was put here in a rock. Yeah. Out by the railroad track. Remember that big one? That was stolen within a month. But in this case, I don't think they'll be stolen.
No.
But will those plaques be, instead of being sitting on top of the surface, can they be recessed a little bit so it's harder to, you know, jar one of those loose?
I think that's a question for Richard.
I know, I'm asking him if they're gonna be, I think they're building it, right?
They're only providing the plaques. The city is providing what it's going to be on top of, so that...
I think we need to look and see if that's a possibility, recessed into it a little bit so that you can't jar it loose, because that's how they got the last one.
That would also take care of my concern, having it more flat.
Yeah, it'll be flat to the surface.
Okay. Mr. Tremblay?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildee?
Maybe it's a richer question, I don't know, but is that gonna be illuminated? Will be some light on the...
No, there will be no lights.
There's no light on it?
There's a light on the flag.
There's a light on the flag.
There is, but there will be no monument lights incorporated into this monument.
Because I know there's one there now on, will it get a little bit?
In the front, yes.
Can that be positioned to where it might, no?
I would have to look into that, but I would doubt it, no.
That one's positioned where it is because the flag needs to be lit at night, so it...
I think at a future time, if we decided we wanted lights on it, we could go with something really inexpensive, do a solar lighting thing on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We thought about trying to come up with something like the back at the trade centers, somewhere with backlight and everything else, but we're getting at, we're talking more money, more money.
Right.
More things to go wrong.
And we needed to move on.
Yeah.
And before we do, I would also like to add that we are also asking for a $10,000 contingency.
Right.
In case there are any foundational, electrical, waterline things that we cannot foresee.
Right.
So, we can take care of those at that time.
Okay.
So, the total is $35,688.
Thank you, Danny. Okay, Mr. Tremblay?
With appreciation for everyone's efforts on this, let me move to authorize an appropriation of $35,688 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Vogue Sign Company in the amount of $25,688 to construct the Camarillo Veterans Memorial Monument in Constitution Park, and approve a contingency amount of $10,000 unforeseen work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is under Finance, St. John's Healthcare Foundation's purchase of hospital equipment, request for payment. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. St. John's Healthcare Foundation has submitted a request to the city for a payment of $500,000 for the purchase of equipment for the new catheterization lab pursuant to the grant funding approved by the city council on August 26, 2015. At that time, the city did not appropriate funds, and it was intended that once the equipment was installed, that the hospital would provide the city with adequate documentation, which they have. And this time, staff is requesting an appropriation of $500,000 from the general fund and assigned, well, actually, we have committed fund balance in this amount. With that appropriation, the city could then move forward with payment to the hospital foundation for the equipment that has been installed. Available for any questions that you might have. Attached to the staff report is also a copy of the agreement that was approved back in 2015.
Any questions?
Just when is it gonna be done? Is there a motion?
September. The motion, I move to approve an appropriation from general fund, committed fund balance in the amount of $500,000, the community support budget to find the great, to sign the great, try it again, to fund the grant agreement with St. John's, St. John's...
Healthcare Foundation.
Healthcare Foundation.
I'll second that.
You have a comment?
Mr. Tremblay?
I just wanted to comment for a minute, because I wasn't on council when this grant was originally approved, but I want to say that I'm very supportive of the action, and I just want to be heard on this for a minute, in that the funds here are to be used, as I understand it, for state-of-the-art cardiac catheterization equipment, which is a topic, of course, of interest to me personally.
The three of us.
As to many others. The city's grant here is clearly for a public purpose, it's clearly for public benefit, it's outlined in the staff report. The bottom line is, this equipment is going to save lives and save lives of Camarillo residents as well as other, as well as other citizens. So, I think this is a very appropriate grant by the city as a public entity to recognize the literally millions of dollars of community investment that is coming in here to provide what is, in essence, a brand-new, I'll call it a patient tower, but in many ways, for the most part, it's a new hospital for this community, and that's not an unusual action by a governmental entity to take. So, I applaud my colleague's grant, earlier grant, and I just, I wanted to get that out because I didn't have the chance to participate in this the first time around. Thanks for the chance to make a comment.
Mr. Kildee?
Just a request. Can we get a tour when it's up and running?
September.
Yeah, I believe they did offer that in conversation with them when they submitted their documentation.
September.
Well, we'd like to...
Well, that's when it's open.
We want to do it before.
Oh, you want a tour before it's open?
Yes. Once it's installed.
The equipment is there.
Equipment's there.
Well, we'll ask them, we won't...
Your Honor, one of the things, when Tony was, let me just follow through a little bit, when Tony's talking about saving lives, if you have a heart problem, you have to have catheterization, or you have to have some angiogram, other things, you'd have to be taken to Oxnard, or in that part, you might be taken to Los Robles. But now, they can do all that here, and so that time that's consumed in travel, that's what saves lives.
Absolutely. Okay, is there a motion?
We already had one.
So moved.
He made a motion, I second it.
Okay. I already had one, sorry. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Public Works, Ventura County Transportation Commission, College Ride Pilot Program Reimbursement Agreement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. The subject agreement provides a mechanism for VCTC to reimburse the city for transit trips taken by eligible college students under VCTC's College Ride Pilot Program, which will start up for the next school year. This program offers free trips to students enrolled at Ventura, Oxnard, and Moore Park Colleges, the Community College District, Channel Islands, and Cal Lutheran. The funding for the College Ride Program is from the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, which receives funds through the state's cap and trade program. The city is actually a direct recipient of some of these funds, along with VCTC, and if you recall, earlier this year, the council acted to contribute our portion, about $9,500 for fiscal year 1718, contribution to the VCTC program, to pool the money with their about $500,000 that is being utilized to start up this free college ride program. The agreement before you tonight allows VCTC to reimburse the city $1.10 per trip taken by an eligible college student. That dollar amount, $1.10 was determined by VCTC based on an average of transit fares from each of the transit operators in the county. Staff estimates around 1,300 eligible riders are expected to use this service next year, and it results in a reimbursement to the city of approximately $1,500. There's a regular, more than likely, monthly accounting and invoicing process that we'll go through, through VCTC to receive that reimbursement. That concludes my report, and available for questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Kildee?
I have two. Dave, do we know where most of the students are going? And the second question is, the Ventura County Community College District, does that encompass all three of the campuses there?
Yes, it does. It is all three. So, this program is countywide. Of course, VCTC and the other transit operators are participating in this. As far as destination of riders, I mean, obviously, a majority of rides within the Camarillo area are, you know, for students at Channel Islands, there is the other service already in place with the VCTC bus that goes there. But then, if there's connections within Camarillo that a college student will be taking on our dialer ride system or our fixed route dialer ride service, you know, that would be a ride that would be free to them under this program. And then, of course, if they ride the trolley, we'll charge them double. No, that's always free.
Double nothing.
Any other questions?
Double lot.
Is there a motion?
Your Honor, authorize the city manager to execute a reimbursement agreement with the Ventura County Transportation Commission for the VCTC College Ride Pilot Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next, under City Attorney, Stock Lumber Property Purchase. The address of that is 2800 Berry Street. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes. The council will recall that on April 11th of this year, I presented for council's consideration the proposal by RINCON to do some remediation work on the stock lumber site, and at that time, the council authorized the sum of $36,729 as a contribution. And then, Stock Lumber, the owner of Stock Lumber is BMC, and they also contributed to the cost. Now, what we're doing is moving forward with the project. With respect to the status of the remediation, RINCON found that there was some additional remediation that was necessary. So, if we can go to the location slides, the Stock Lumber site, this is the further out view, just to give some orientation, is located on the, at the intersection of Lewis Road and Berry. It is located west of Lewis and south of Berry. The blueprint calling out Stock Lumber, and you can see the surrounding uses there. Can I have the next slide, please? Here is a close-up of the Stock Lumber property, showing in more clear detail the site itself. The next slide. So, as I was mentioning, the RINCON was retained to do an evaluation of the soil. RINCON prepared, as part of their work, the slide that's illustrated before you now, and what they found was that there were some hydrocarbons that needed to be removed. They did remove the hydrocarbons that they were able to identify as a result of their borings. However, there has now been found some additional remediation that is going to be necessary at the site. The approximate cost for the city's share of that additional remediation will be about $5,000, and we expect that that would be shared with BMC as well, and they've indicated a willingness to share in that cost. So, the reason we're presenting this item to you this evening is, if you see on big page 16 of your packet, there is a, I direct your attention to that page, because paragraph 35 of the purchase and sale agreement provides that the purchase of the property is conditional upon city council approval of the purchase and sale agreement. So, I was reading there from the purchase and sale agreement itself. We've also received the preliminary title report, which is an attachment to your agenda packet. We reviewed that title report. There are no concerns with respect to title on the property. Once the additional remediation has been completed, and hopefully, all of the contamination has been removed, then the scenario will be that RINCON will prepare a final report. They will submit that report to the county, and the county will then review it, issue either a no further action letter or some comparable determination, finding that the site no longer requires any further remediation. And at that point, the property will be considered available for purchase by the city. So, the way that, pursuant to instructions from the city manager, the way that the agenda report has been drafted is that the action item would be to waive the contingencies, approving the purchase agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents for the purchase of the Stock Lumber site, including the purchase and sale agreement, but it is subject to a receipt by the city first of the no further action letter from the county. In addition, there will be some further costs which are expected to close out the transaction, which are identified in the agenda report. Finance and community development have reviewed the dollar amounts and determined that an appropriation will be necessary of $3,745,099. The bulk of that is the balance of the purchase price. The purchase price itself was 3.6 million. The city made a deposit of 360,000, so the balance of the purchase price is 3240,000. The additional appropriations are for the final closeout costs. So, if we could have the next slide, please? I just forecast what the action was in my previous comments, and here you see it on the board. It's also found in your agenda packet. So, I am available to answer questions if there are any.
Are there any questions? Mr. Kildee?
Yeah. Brian, so with these findings, is it your best-guessed estimate that they will not find any other soil that needs to be, I guess I'd call it renumerated if possible? Would this be, would this pretty much close that chapter?
Yeah, well, it's certainly our hope that it will. Obviously, there's a process involved with cleaning a site. They went in and did borings and tests of the soil. They removed the soil that they believed was contaminated. They found out that there were some additional hydrocarbons there, and so there's further remediation that is needed. The process will be, as... The process will be, assuming the council authorizes the action this evening, would be to engage Rincon to do the further remediation. Rincon would then go back in again, test to make sure they got it all. If there's any spots that still need remediation, then that soil would be removed as well. This is a fairly common practice, in my experience, that oftentimes, they don't get it all the first time, and sometimes it takes some follow-up, if you will, testing and further removal by excavation. So this is a pretty common occurrence. And the hope is that this next remediation effort will be complete, and that we'll be able to get the no further action letter from the county.
Okay, so, and also, just one quick follow-up. What they found is an issue with storage of lumber, and not a dump site of anything else that they know of.
That's what they believe to be the source, yes, that it is because of the storage of lumber. That's what they indicated in their communications.
Mr. Tremble.
Well, to me, what's important about this discussion, thanks, Mr. Kildie, for pointing it out, and that is that this is all contingent on the city, the whole deal moving forward is contingent on the city receiving an NFA, sorry, a no further action letter from the county of Ventura. So if, for example, this further remediation were done, and you had the, you had sampling conducted for closure, and something else was found, we still wouldn't, the city still wouldn't be proceeding forward. Because in that case, the county, it's fair to say, the county's not going to issue an NFA letter until everything is completely buttoned up. So I think we are in good shape, because we have that as a condition precedent to closing under item number two.
I should probably add to that, that, and I believe I mentioned this back in April, but I think it's worth mentioning again. When this item was originally presented to the county, they submitted it to the state Department of Toxic Substance Control to see whether or not the state wanted to review the site. The state said, no, it wasn't necessary, that they would allow the county to do it. So we're looking at this on the local level. I also attended a meeting with the county, and with Rincon, and with representatives from Stock Lumber, and we met with them some months ago. So this is a process that's taking some time, but as I said before, that's not unusual. And I should also mention that the funding is coming from the housing tax exempt bond proceeds. And because it's the intention of the city, as I understand it, for this site to be a site future affordable housing. But before we can get to that stage, we need to acquire the property, obviously. So everything that we've been doing up to this point has been for the purpose of our due diligence, and we've hopefully almost completed that due diligence, and would be able to move forward.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald.
I have a question, following up on the soil samples. I go back to when we started with the Cedar Oak project, and we had testing, and we went through very much what we're going through here. But it wasn't until almost the building process happened, and they went deeper, and that we found more, and had to do more remediation. Have these samples been deep enough that we are sure we're not going to have that same problem?
Well, that's my understanding from Rincon, is that they, you can see, if we can get, go back to the previous slide, the one, that one. You can see from this slide, the number of borings that they did.
How deep?
They went as deep as they determined. I can't remember the depth of the borings. But I do know that Rincon has been doing this work for a long time. They're very reputable, and that they made recommendations with respect to the number of borings, the depth of the borings, the location of the borings. This was all mapped out in a process, and it was presented to the county for their review and approval. So my understanding from Scott English, who's the principal at Rincon that we've been communicating with, is they believe they're very close to having removed all of the contamination, and that the amount that's left is not a significant amount, based on what I've been told.
And I'm pretty sure, and I would have to go look, but I'm pretty sure we went through the exact same thing with the exact same company on Cedar Oak. But if we were to find something else, as the construction were to begin, that then would be on the city's dime, so to speak.
Well-
We would be the property owner.
Well, we're not going to, Mr. Norman is not going to be executing the purchase agreement on, and allowing this project to go forward, until the county is satisfied that that site is one that does not require any further remediation.
That's right.
So if we started to build, as we did in Cedar Oak, and they started to turn ground deeper and wider than what they had tested, then whose obligation would it be?
Well, after the city purchases, it would be the city's responsibility. But that's the reason we've been going through this due diligence process, and part of the reason why it's been taking as long as it has, is to make sure that, to the extent that's reasonable, to determine whether or not there's any issues with the soil.
We're lucky this time. I just have one comment, and I'll pass it to Mr. Morgan. Can we have them take down their banner that says they've moved? It's been up there for, I'm looking at Joe. It's been up there for months, and months, and months, and months. Way past our banner time.
Yes, we'll address that.
Mr. Morgan.
No, I don't want to carry that thing in further. I just know when they certify it's done, it's done. If they find something else, the people that certified, not certified it, but did it, is going to have to come back in and clean it up. That's my understanding.
Well, we'll have that conversation at a future date. Let's see where it goes from this point. We can only deal with what's in front of us.
Okay. No questions? Any further comments? Is there a motion?
Do we want to do them separately?
I, let me make a suggestion. You can say you are moving the suggested action without reading all three of these items, if you wish to do that. Of course, if you want, you can do them one at a time.
I think you should read them.
Can I make a motion on that, then?
Well, I think Mr. Kildie was about ready to, when-
I would make a motion that we approve the three suggested actions.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion a second. I just want, have a comment here. This is being done with bond proceeds that currently were through the redevelopment agency. And this is a great example of what redevelopment was supposed to do. It was supposed to take old sites that didn't have anything, that had some contamination, and clean them up, and make it into something that's usable. Because otherwise, nobody would buy the contaminated sites. So that's a plug for redevelopment coming through again. Anyway, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. At this point, we need to reconvene the Camrio Sanitary District Board. So, Mr. Tremble.
Let's go ahead-
That's what I have. If I'm wrong-
Is that what you have?
Set me straight.
Let's go ahead and reconvene the sanitary district board and move to item, I believe it's four B.
Okay, you're on four B, and I'm on eleven A. So could we have this, and the item is resolution setting Compensation, Classification, and Benefits Program and Statement of Understanding for City Employees. For Mr. Tremble, it's Camrio Sanitary District employees. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a resolution setting Compensation, Classification, and Benefits Programs, and a statement of understanding for the city employees. And as you also mentioned, it is joint with the Camrio Sanitary District. As you know, every year, we go out and do a salary survey of benchmark positions of nineteen other cities. We take the average of those midpoint salaries, add the seven and a half percent, to create our new control or midpoint of our salary bands. Salary bands will be adjusted by varying percentages based on classification, with an average increase of two percent overall. Individual employee increases are subject to annual performance reviews on individual anniversary dates throughout the fiscal year. The benefit structure will remain unchanged from the previous year, and the salary band and benefit information is listed in your packet, as well as the resolution. And we're here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? What are the wishes of the council?
Your Honor, I will move that we adopt a resolution setting the Compensation, Classification, and Benefits Program, and approving a statement of understanding for the terms and conditions of employment of city employees effective July first, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
So motion a second for the city. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tremble.
Can I turn my mic on? Do I hear a motion with respect to item eight A? Uh, no.
B.
Pardon me, I apologize. Eight B. No? Wait a minute, I'm not getting it right. Hang on. Four B, I'm going to go back to my Roman numeral. Lessons.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion is adopted unanimously. We will, at this point, recess the sanitary district meeting again until after seven-thirty this evening.
Okay, at a later time, the city council is going to go into a closed session. Could the city attorney please tell us the authorization under which we will do that?
Yes, we have a closed session, conference with real property negotiator. The authority is Government Code Section five four nine, five six point eight. The property APN number is listed in the agenda. It's at forty-three, forty-five Las Posas Road. It's a pipeline easement. The agency negotiators and negotiating parties are also listed in the agenda, under negotiation or price and terms of payment.
Okay, next is New Business Oral Communications Information Items Which Do Not Require Action. I'll start with Mr. Tremble.
I'm not used to getting there so early.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In terms of meetings attended, which I've attended since the last council meeting, on June fourteen, I attended a Camrio Chamber Luncheon, and also the Ventura County Organization of Governments Annual Dinner. On June twenty-one, an Association of Water Agency's meeting, the council's policy committee with the mayor, and an EDC VC board meeting. On June twenty-two, there was a board retreat for the Clean Power Alliance down in Los Angeles. On June twenty-five, we had a council finance investment committee meeting. And today, before our council meeting on June twenty-seventh, we had a finance committee meeting for the Clean Power Alliance. That is, those are all of my meetings since the last council meeting, and that's all I have.
Mr. Kildie.
All right. I attended on June fourteenth an airport authority meeting. And on June twenty-first, I attended a VRSD meeting. And today, along with Mr. Morgan, I attended a Streets and Transportation Committee meeting. And just one comment, I'm starting to get some calls, and I'm sure a lot of others are as well, that the medians right out in front are starting to take shape. And I have to tell you a funny story. A lady came in, this store extremely upset that we were tearing out trees and all that, and she came by today and said, I'd recommend it, just give us some time, go on by there and take a look at them. And she drove by today, and she came by and said, you know, it's looking pretty good. So I just thought I might share that with those out there. So that's all I have.
Mrs. McDonald.
I believe since we've met last, we've had our VCOG Annual Dinner, and the Ronald Reagan Library, which is always very, very nice. And I think almost everybody was there, so that was nice that we all came out. This isn't a time where they invite all elected officials within the county, not just cities or the county, but school boards and any elected officials. So it's a good time just to get together and share the successes, and cry a little bit about our failures that happen along the way. One letter, and I think we all got a letter, and it has to do with water conservation. I know this came up before, and I think this was addressed to all council members. But it has to do with some of our Home Depots and our, those type of stores, giving out buckets to catch rainwater in your showers. And it is amazing, not rainwater, well, if you have a rain shower, it would be. Water in your shower, since it doesn't rain, and then, you know, using it to water your plants. And it really does save a lot of water, and I'm just wondering if we might talk to them about it, or see if we can get somebody, or some of our water conservation money that we could use to encourage people to do it. If you don't try it, you think, oh, no big deal, but as soon as you do it once or twice, you realize how much water you really do to accumulate. But you've got to have a good bucket, because you've got to be able to carry it back outside. So I'm just wondering if we might be interested in trying that again this summer. So I will throw that out there.
Okay?
And that's all I have.
Mr. Morgan.
I have, for years, been doing big deals of water out of my shower. We have saved tons, two showers, my wife and I. We've got to figure out a way of recycling our water from your dishwasher, I mean, your washing machine. And there is, there is an element that can be done. I've got to find out who does that kind of thing, because you can recirculate that into your plants. Okay, we do stay, I'm not going to go through all this, but State of the Chamber Luncheon, which was very good, and the officers they picked are very, very, look, be very active and very good. So I look forward to a good relationship with the chamber. Reagan Library, we went to the VCOG meeting. Again, we got to sit and talk with a lot of our colleagues, and exchange information, had a lot of fun. Went to Alma Via. We all got invited to it. Alma Via had a whiskey, whiskers, and wheels. Okay? I want to go look at Alma Via again, to see how it looks, since we did it a long time ago. And they had about twenty-five old cars there, beautiful old cars. I was able to pass out our Fiesta flyer, so they can join our club, hopefully. APCB Board, I had an Air Quality Board meeting over in Ventura, which was a very short meeting. We did a couple of grants that we approved, and so on and so forth. Just for fun, the Greek Fest, I usually go to every year. It is huge now, over there at the library, I mean, at the, at the airbase, airport, airbase. Tells you where I come from. But this year, there are so many people from out of town. A lot of Greeks, they pass it on out, and so it's from all over the place, LA too. Street and Transportation Committee meeting, we had that this morning, Kevin and I did. And you'll be getting some of that, the results of that, here someday soon, our recommendations. Camrio Ranch Foundation, we had that meeting, Charlotte and I did, today. And we made some changes in what is being wanted by the Ranch Foundation. And that'll come forward to you also. Trees along the freeway, I am so happy. They were putting up those trees in front of that, those townhouses, I call it. They're townhouses on the freeway, they're next to the Marriott. That looks great. We, at one point, we had that white building there at Adolfo and Center Rosa Road. It's just one big, three-story white building, until we griped at the staff about, put some trees around it. Now it looks really good, because the trees are big, and they hide it a little bit, and make it. Well, these are going to do the same thing. I looked at those, what, nine, nine or eleven trees are put up there. I think that's going to help a lot. And so I'm glad to see that happen. Carmen, I got the same thing. I got another guy talked to me. He lives on, down the way, and I said, wait, give it a chance. Then all of a sudden, he saw the rocks, well, yeah, but now he sees the trees. Now I said, wait, just wait, there's going to be some plants too. Drought-resistant planting, give it a little time, and so he's waiting to see what happens down by his house. But it's looking very good, gang. So I think that what's going on is making the city better. That's it.
Okay, I attended a Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency's meeting last week. They moved it from this week to last week, so I didn't have to be in meetings from one-thirty this afternoon on. I also attended a policy committee meeting, an investment committee meeting, the change of command for the CBs, VCOG Annual Dinner, the chambers, the State of the Chamber of Commerce Luncheon, and finally, the Camrio Ranch Committee, not the Foundation Board, today. And that's all I attended in the last two weeks. So with that being said, we will recess, be back here at seven-thirty, and we will go to a study session in the meantime, and perhaps a closed session. So we're in recess. So we're in recess. Did he say that?
No, it isn't. Yeah, I've been through all of them.
It is, it's the longest minute of the night. Call a meeting of the Camarillo City Council back to order, and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Mr. Tremblay, could you lead us in the flag salute?
Please place your right hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a presentation tonight, uh, the Growing Works Nursery Project. And Supervisor Linda Parks is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, I have some material for you too. I wanted to let you know about Growing Works. It's a, uh, project I've been working on, and it's, uh, kind of in your backyard. It's on Lewis Road, over there near Casa Pacifica and the Rain Project. Um, if you go to the next, oh, here we go. Thank you. Um, who operates Growing Works? This is Turning Point Foundation. And Turning Point Foundation works with people with mental illness, and particularly veterans and people who are homeless. And they provide shelters, supportive housing, rehabilitation programs to assist people with mental illness so they can remain functioning. And we find that in the county of Ventura, we really don't have too many job training programs, and that's what Growing Works is. This is actually, uh, not only do you get job training, you will also get a paycheck, so it's a job too. It's modeled after a program I saw in San Luis Obispo. I went to Cal Poly there, and, uh, they have a very successful program called Growing Grounds that's been there for thirty years. And, uh, we've named ours Growing Works, uh, and they are, have been a wonderful help in helping us set this up here. The, this is actually photos from the Growing Grounds in San Luis Obispo. It's a nursery, it's a drought tolerant nursery, and it's also wholesale. And their employees also are people with mental illness. And I, we just have the most perfect location, because the county owns that land, you know, that whole fifty acres or so from Casa Pacifica, and the rain shelter, and just immediately adjacent to, uh, supportive housing for people with mental illness. I picked the land because, you know, the county owned it, but it didn't even dawn on me that right next door are clients of the county who could benefit from this program. And really importantly is the Cal State Channel Islands is right, right, less than a mile away. And they have been incredible partners. And we are, everything from their psychology students, they have a school of social business. Uh, and this is really what this is, a social business. It's not how much money you make, but actually, what can you do for society? And so they're, uh, Center for, their school of social business is totally on board. They're gonna help us with our business plan. The students are already helping out. And then, the number one degree at Cal State Channel Islands is psychology. So a lot of the psychology students could come intern. The president, President Beck is a psychologist, and so, uh, she's very supportive of it, as well as, you know, everything from nursing program to the, uh, they have a community engagement with the students, need to get service credits. So lots of potential help, and they can buy our plants, which is wonderful. Uh, so we see that as a successful model. And I also note that the county government center will also buy plants. And, and I've been talking with different school districts and others who are stepping up. And we really need to grow really good plants, and that's what they do in San Luis Obispo. They're not gonna buy your plants, because they feel sorry for you, they're gonna buy them, because they're good plants, and we're gonna make sure they are. So here's the site map, as I, Casa Pacifica on the right, Villa Cayegas is actually a program run by the nonprofit Turning Point Foundation. And then in the back, Casa de Esperanza. And that, those are, uh, businesses that are not nonprofit, but again, they're all providing services for clients of the county, uh, from our behavioral health department. So what we have is, um, you can't quite see, but where it says Growing Works on there is a big six thousand square foot L-shaped corrugated metal building. And so we have that from the county, as well as the land, about two acres directly behind it, and then another four and a half acres behind that. So altogether, we have about seven acres roughly available for the nursery. And then on Lewis Road itself, we're going to put demonstration gardens, two acres of demonstration gardens. And I think that's really going to be a benefit, uh, for this area. You know, instead of it looking blighted, we're gonna have, uh, an area of beauty. The public will be able to go to the demonstration gardens, uh, and so that's a real benefit. And again, the employees are, as I mentioned, behavioral health clients of the county, also through the California Department of Rehabilitation, and then the residents right next door and others, and veterans with, uh, post-traumatic stress. And we are looking at actually, um, we have funding now with a contract between the county and, and Turning Point to provide for the Ventura County's clients. Veterans have a different type of, uh, medical insurance, but we're looking at trying to put together a program through, uh, other funding sources, so we can serve veterans there also. Uh, here are some of the startup helpers that we really started asking this summer, so a lot have come on board uh, just in the last few months. Uh, again, everyone from, um, companies that have contributed, some services to some products. We have also been really, uh, fortunate to have the, the CBs. Uh, they're in the middle at the top there, they cleared the land, that two and a half acres has been cleared. And to the left of that is the California Conservation Corps. Uh, they've been really big in helping us prepare the site, and they're also over there in the bottom right corner. And then, uh, on the top right, uh, we're putting up an owl box. We're putting owl boxes there, because we find that, you know, raptors are better at getting rid of rodents than using poison. So we want to make sure we are, uh, not poisoning the environment. Uh, and then, uh, bottom left, our Cal State Channel Island students who helped us with our first planting of acorns. I wanna grow lots of oaks, so we'll, we'll have those available. And we have a lot of land. This is a close-up of the demonstration gardens, and then, you can't really see the, um, the key, but in a lot of it is native plants, though it's not exclusively a native plant nursery. We're going to have a lot of different plants from different, um, habitat, like coastal sagebrush or Channel Islands, uh, plantings, riparian habitat, so, lot of, um, different types of areas around our area that we will feature in the demonstration gardens. And they will also have a path, uh, throughout them, that will be out of, uh, decomposed granite. We had a big rock party, that's what I called it. We got a bunch of volunteers to come help us gather, uh, rocks that were donated at, from Sherwood. And, uh, we're going to line the paths with rocks. And then what you see on the left is a big labyrinth. We're putting in the, uh, gardens, a seventy-foot wide labyrinth made out of, with the rock paths and plants, probably a lot of, um, uh, lavender. So this really is a model of sustainability, both in the sense that the nursery itself will provide funds as we sell the plants, and that will maintain the nursery, like any nursery does. And then on top of that, we're selling drought tolerant plants, which is sustainable for the environment. And we know that so many people need to switch out of their turf and grass and move on to drought tolerant plants. So it really is a high-demand job right now. We're, a lot of landscapers have, uh, the need for more expertise than what they've had. Generally, when your gardener comes to your home, they're used to what I call like mowing and blowing, and they're gone in ten, you know, a few minutes. But when you're taking care of a, a front yard that's got landscape from drought tolerant plants, you have to spend a little bit more time, you have, and each one has a different watering need and how you clip them and grow. And that's another nice benefit of the demonstration gardens, because the employees will not only learn how to grow plants in pots, but they'll also see them in the ground and learn how to tend them, and that will make their job skills more valuable. Also looking at working with the master gardeners in the future, once we get going enough on this, to help teach, uh, like a green certificate program, so our employees can actually be certified. They have such a program at, uh, Santa Barbara College. This is the, um, uh, Turning Point has a website, and we have the URL, growingworks.org, and there's a lot of opportunity to volunteer, uh, to get a newsletter, to donate, of course. And then also, uh, we have a wish list, which I'll just throw up there for you. That veterans program that we really want to do, uh, being able to get some outside funding for the veterans programs, so Turning Point can run that. And then also, we wanna be as green as we can, everything from, uh, solar, we'd like to get, we're having our roof fixed, so we're gonna have it ready, if we can get money for solar panels. Uh, do a rainwater capture system, since they're up there, we'll get all the gutters so that we can capture rainwater. Uh, we are going to be using the surface water, it's called, from Camrosa. So we were going to need some pretty heavy-duty filtration type of system, because that water, so that we can be able to use that water for all the different plant types. So that's kind of an expensive wish list, but that's, that's what we need. Uh, we're always open for a labyrinth sponsor, uh, gonna see if we can get a, a truck donated for the nursery and, and, but you can go to growingworks.org and see everything from rakes to labyrinths. Uh, and just finally, this is, uh, the Growing Grounds in San Luis Obispo that is our inspiration, and we hope to be looking like that, uh, actually, pretty shortly. We've already, uh, have some plants going, and we have funds to purchase, uh, a considerable amount of plants. And our program for employees is going to start in a couple of weeks. So everything's moving quite fast, and we're spending a lot of time getting the site ready. We have a volunteer day, um, this Saturday morning, and probably the next Saturday also. Uh, so I just wanna let you know, and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
And your ribbon cutting is set for Thursday, Octo, uh, August sixteenth.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Your ribbon cutting is set for Thursday, August sixteenth.
Oh. Have you been to our, our website?
No, I haven't, but I just got the notice today for the ribbon cutting.
Okay, okay.
Any questions? Mr. Morgan.
You're gonna use those wood boxes, huh? The box, you box in the areas? I mean, well-
Planning beds?
Planning beds, yeah.
All the plants are gonna be in pots?
Well, they won't be boxed in like that?
Um, what they have, I think, is that is kind of a frame where they put their potted plants, but they are, they're not in the ground, they're actually all in pots. So we will have these long beds, we're calling them, we'll have different plant species, and that's how we're planning on doing it too.
You've got your recycled water right there, from Camrosa? Right there on the property, ready to go?
We're actually, uh, end of, end of line right there.
Exactly.
They're gonna grow it out further, but in the meantime, we'll be able to use that, which is good for the environment too.
Very good.
Mr. Kildine.
Yeah, and I think this is a great program. Um, I just wanna make sure, this will be open to the public, is that correct?
Yeah, so the, it's a wholesale nursery, and so, um, that will be landscapers and, um, uh, the institutions will do recovery projects, like rehabilitate, um, getting projects that need restoration. We can go out there and gather seeds and then plant them. We'll be selling to, um, retail nurseries, so that will also be one of the sources, as well as institutions. So basically wholesale, so maybe once in a while, we'll have days where people, maybe once a week, if we can get it that well, where people can actually come by that aren't, um, landscapers. Uh, but the, the public will be able to always go into the, the demonstration gardens, which will be a really nice benefit, I think, to the community.
It'd be nice out there.
Any other questions?
Great, well, I'll leave-
Thank you very much.
-for you and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, from here on, the meeting, oh, I'm sorry, public comments. This is a time for people to speak to us about items that are not on tonight's agenda. Matthew Wayne Lorimer tonight, now that's a name I don't think you've ever put down. But while Matt is walking up here, I'm going to explain, because we got several speakers, for anybody who hasn't been here before. We have a three-minute limit. I can see a clock, you can see a clock, when it counts down to two minute, it's a one minute. Uh, there will be a yellow light come on, there's a signal. And then, we ask you to finish up by the time that the light turns red and it says zero, 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 so. Matt, please state your name for the record.
Uh, Matt Lorimer. Um, good evening, council and people at home. I have a few comments tonight. One is the camp that's gonna have the firefighters. Um, it's a shame that it's gonna be located here, but again, I have to ask the council, you repeatedly said that experience matters. I think it's relationships. I'm really shocked that it's going forward and that there's nothing else you could have done. And again, you run on that, so that's disappointing. The next thing I wanna talk about is the Camarillo Ranch, seventy-two thousand dollar loss. You know, that's a fiscal misconduct of money. The city manager, Dave Norman, he's responsible, basically, for the management of the city. The idea that you lose seventy-two thousand dollars, you know, Tony Ha- is an attorney, Kevin owns a business, Ms. Craven, you have rentals, you do accounting, Jan, Mr. Morgan, I don't, I'm not gonna go there. We know about the Fiesta, but the bottom-
About, tried about law enforcement.
Okay, it's my turn to talk more.
Yeah.
Remember that. The bottom line is, you know something, when you lose seventy-two thousand dollars, that's the taxpayer's money. And then when you put the same people on the board, I think it's time that the city take over the finances of that. You should have volunteers, but the idea you lose seventy-two thousand dollars is just, what do you say? The next thing I wanna talk about is the hospital getting a half a million dollars. You know something? We need a senior center. You have graffiti all over the city. The idea that a hospital that makes multi-millions of dollars in your town, that closed the, um, the ward for people who were having kids, basically, a few years ago, is unacceptable. The idea that they're gonna get a half a million dollars, when you got graffiti all over, you've got, people have been wanting a senior center. That's money well spent. The idea, half a million dollars, what could you do to make the city better? Let's start with all the graffiti. Let's start with the police department helping them out, crime stoppers. And again, a senior center. You know, we've been talking about this for years, I haven't heard any updates, really. I think the seniors in this community want an, uh, a new senior center, and I like more than, we're working on it, and we're gonna get to it in a few months, few, uh, I mean, it really, it really needs to move the ball. And you know, if you're gonna give a half a million dollars to lobbyists who come in here and talk to you privately, or wherever, maybe you oughta take that money and use it for your city, and you oughta put it in the senior center. You know, and you also should work on the crime issue in the city. Okay, oh, you're gonna say it's not that bad, Mr. Morgan, I know that. That's your comments all the time. Uh, but the bottom line is this, that's atrocious, that kind of money that's gonna be given out. And, um, you know, that's why we're, we're voting for terminals, and I think, uh, we need them in the city, you know? You gotta, if you're gonna run on experience, you gotta solve problems.
Thank you. Dennis Fandy.
Good evening, council, my name is Dennis Fandy, I live at ten seventy-four Coast Street. And those of you that read the newspaper recently, saw my house in the news. Corner of Co, an SUV running into my house. Now, since I moved here in, uh, June of nineteen eighty-three, and prior to that, neighbors were trying to reduce the speed limits and improve the safety of that area. Now, my background is safety, I was a Navy pilot, but I also was a crash investigator, as well as anti-terrorism. But I also did crash investigation, and I have assisted the police department numerous times doing the crash investigations, as cars go through my yard, into my driveway, through my neighbors' yards. This has been a continuing problem for years. There's nothing has been done. Now, I've done a lot with the city, the city transportation department knows me well. That's how we got crosswalks put in, we got the little signs that say, yield for pedestrians, and such throughout the city. And I've, numerous times, at one time, they were talking about putting a security camera on the roof of my house, just to observe, which is fine, that would be great, but, we need speed bumps. The speed bumps you have there are a joke. Today, I was clocking cars doing forty-five and a twenty-five. This is routine, day and night, and I'm getting tired of them going through my yard, trust me. As well, as well as it's dangerous for the kids. Now, I've submitted several proposals. I taught my grad students, when I taught aviation safety and ground safety, never present a problem without solutions. I presented the city with numerous, uh, solutions over the years, and nothing has prevailed. They say, well, there's not enough traffic. Well, maybe not, but, uh, you don't live there. Those of us that live there know the traffic, especially during school hours. Those- Those of us that live there know what the traffic's like on the weekends as cars speed doing 55, in excess of 55 miles an hour down Lantana, because there is no stop between Los Poses and Pondrosa. I have a lot of my friends that use that route because there is no stop. So, I was glad that the neighbors actually spoke up in the newspaper and gave the city a black eye on that corner. That corner, again, is routinely an accident, and they don't get reported. A lot of times, we'll watch them just exchange phone numbers and drive off. And then that's not counting the numerous times that we have near misses. At some point, I'm going to take my own action, if I have to, to start slowing cars down. It's unacceptable to have cars doing 55 and a 25. So, I'd like you to take a look at some of the solutions we've provided the city and the transportation department. Something's got to be done before another car goes through my house again. I'm getting tired of it, and the next person goes through the house isn't going to come out.
Thank you. Jean Kohut? I'm sorry if I pronounced it wrong.
Or Kohoot, if you're in Europe.
Just pull that down, please, the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. I'm sure you remember me from SB 54. I was here at the last meeting, and during that meeting, there was both the opposition and the pro-SB 54 people. Unfortunately, there was a lot of terms being thrown out from the pro-SB 54 side. I'm sure that if you go through your video of that meeting, you will hear racists, bigots, white supremacists, and I don't remember, but I do believe that the term Nazis was thrown out. There is also a YouTube video of the whole meeting where these things are being said. Why, I don't understand, did not the city council members immediately, the first time someone started to throw out those terms, question them immediately and ask them, did they have any proof that any of us, and myself personally, since I was in opposition to SB 54, was a card-carrying member of any of the American Nazi parties? Videos or photographs of any of us, myself included, attending any kind of a white supremacist rally or meeting? Instead, the terms were just thrown out there, right and left. And I'm sure that there are attorneys that would understand that that really is defamation, unless you show some proof. You shouldn't be calling people those kinds of names and throwing that out. Suppose someone was here and went to make a job application, and an employer was here, and they said, "Oh, that was part of the SB 54 people. They must be a Nazi or a white supremacist. I'm not going to hire them." So, I just want to know why no one called them out. Go through your videos. I'm sure you know who those people are. You have their names, their email, their phone numbers, their addresses. I'd be happy to sit there here in front of city council and debate any of them. I am a student of World War II and the rise of Nazi Germany. I've made several trips to both Western and Eastern Europe to visit the ghettos and the camps. I understand what happened in Nazi Germany and why it happened. I will bet you that if any of them would debate me in front of a city council at any time, at any place, no one could tell me who Albert Speer was and what his role was. I will bet you that none of them could tell me anything about what happened to the Sixth Army at Stalingrad and who the generals were. I can tell you, because I've made it a study in my life, but I'll bet you the people just throwing out those terms like that could not debate me in one of those debates. So, I'm open to that at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Terri Bray?
Terri Bray, Lamplighter Mobile Home Part. Long time no see. Yes, I'm still alive. Yes, my house is still in disarray. Haven't been able to come to city council meetings because I'm taking care of my elderly parents, both who became ill two weeks apart. I'm on family medical leave at this time. I have to say, I'm appalled on how I'm not responded to by the entire city council, by Mr. Dave Norman, by Mr. Joe Vaca. I sent emails in regards to what came across to me that was disturbing information, having to do with the application that I had to re-approve for with Comprehensive Housing Services after my home was damaged by a nonprofit organization who's back with you tonight asking for more money. It was relayed to me by one of the contractors that I had to receive two contractor bids from, that his staff was told personally by one of your staff of the city that Comprehensive Housing Services is no longer going to be funded with the CDBG funds or HUD money, yet you're requiring me to reapply with them? I've been put at the end of the line for the new funding that supposedly is going to happen after June 30th, but may not. So I don't know if I'm being put on a ruse or not. I sent you an email, I asked you point-blank, is this true? Are you actually predetermining you're not going to fund CHS, and are you going to leave my house in ruin? My house got damaged because I came to you and asked for help. You provided an unlicensed contractor who provided unlicensed subcontractor who damaged my home. That is fact. It's been verified by two different state agencies that I had to pay for, and I still live in sub-quality standards. Now, you're requiring me to have my CHS application include the repair of my bathroom, around a $10,000 repair, that was done by that other organization who's asking for money tonight. You're cheating me out of what I'm entitled to and making me pay for your mistakes. It's appalling. It's not right, and this is not over. I am not leaving. I'm going to have this rectified, and it's not going to come out of my pocket, because you created it. You didn't do your homework. Fiscal management, you went ahead and funded for years an organization that wasn't licensed by the state. You're entitled for that money back. How do I know that? Because in the do's and don'ts of the HUD policy that's written, and I gave you a copy of, you're entitled to that money back. Did you ever ask for it? No. Instead, you're giving them more money. You're keeping them more employed. So, I'm just telling you, this is not going away, and it's the calm before the storm.
Thank you. From here on, we have three agencies that are going to be opening... Oh, somebody else, I'm sorry. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to us on public comments, on items that are not on the agenda?
City council.
Oh, that one is on the agenda, okay. So is there anyone else who would like to speak to us on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll go ahead with what I was saying. We have three agencies that will be opening meetings at different times, different people will be conducting the meetings. If I mess up on the order of some of this, I hope somebody else is also looking at the agenda of these different things and straighten me out. So at this time, I will also open the successor, Camrio successor agency to the redevelopment agency meeting.
And I will go ahead and reopen the Camrio sanitary district meeting, and I believe at this point, we are going to move to item 8A for Camrio sanitary district. And that matter involves a resolution placing direct assessments on the Ventura County Security Property Tax Roll for the following fiscal year. And do we have a staff report on that?
Yes. Yes, this action will provide the authority for the Camrio sanitary district to place certain delinquent utility bills on the Ventura County Secure Property Tax Roll for fiscal year 2018-19. City staff has provided the necessary notices to the delinquent customers, and at this time, there are six accounts to be placed on the tax rolls for payment. Total amount of $5,080. So at this time, staff is recommending that the adoption of a resolution that would authorize the placement of the direct assessments on the county, Ventura County Secure Property Tax Roll for the property owners with delinquent utility accounts.
Do any of the directors have any questions on this item? Just one quick question, just to clarify, this is a item, would you agree, that's statutorily authorized? It occurs each and every year? It's authorized under the Health and Safety Code, so it's, I won't characterize it as routine, but it's something that occurs every year?
Yes, it is an annual process for delinquent accounts.
All right, may I?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll adopt a resolution authorizing the Camrio sanitary district to place-
This is a public hearing.
It's no public, oh, it is, I'm sorry, you'd have to-
Are there any speaker cards? Thank you for reminding me.
A little premature.
All right.
Am I ready now?
Is there anybody who wants to be heard on this matter, who did not turn in a speaker card? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the Camrio sanitary district to place direct assessments on the Ventura County Secure Property Tax Rolls for fiscal year 2018-19 on the property owners with delinquent utility accounts.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion is adopted unanimously.
Okay, we're going to go back to the city council meeting? Or not?
No, never mind. I thought you were going to this one first. City council, may I?
We're looking at item 18A for city council.
And, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is an item on item 18A that I'm going to recuse myself on, consistent with my recusal on March 28th of this year. One of the proposed recipients, Livingston Memorial, is a client of my former law firm. They participate next year if they are a proposed recipient, but not this year. There hasn't been enough passage of time since I left my former firm, so as I understand our protocol, I'll go ahead and leave the dais, and you'll call me when you're done.
And this is a public hearing on the CDBG action plan. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Axana Buck will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Craven and council members. The city's goals for the CDBG program are included in the fiscal year 2015-2019 Regional Consolidated Plan, which served as the application to HUD for CDBG funding. The annual action plans specify how the city will spend its CDBG funding to meet the goals in the consolidated plan. The action plan must be submitted to HUD for review each year. The city's allocation for fiscal year 2018-2019 is $310,228, which is an increase from last year's allocation of $255,000. In addition, the city has received program income in the amount of $200,243. Majority of this program income is due to a resale of a low-income unit on Maple Creek Walk. And the new allocation and the program income provide a total of $510,471 for CDBG programs in 2018-2019. Fifteen percent of the allocation and fifteen percent of the program income can be used on public service programs. In total, we have $76,570 available for public services. Twenty percent of the allocation, or $62,000, may be used on program administration and fair housing. And sixty-five percent of the allocation and the remaining program income can be used on other eligible activities. In total, $371,855 is available for those activities. The city received applications from eight public service agencies with combined requests of $103,241. On March 28th, the city council held a public hearing to determine preliminary allocations for each agency, which totaled $66,825. Since that public hearing, HUD has released the funding allocations, and Camrio's allocation was higher than anticipated. Therefore, staff is recommending to increase an allocation for each agency by approximately sixteen percent to use all of the available funding. The only agency that would not receive a full sixteen percent increase is ombudsman, and that's because it would exceed the agency's request of $10,000. In addition to the public service agencies, the city received applications from Habitat for Humanity for the Preserve Home Program, and from Ventura County Community Development Corporation for Down Payment Assistance Program. Staff is recommending to fully fund Habitat for Humanity's request, and staff is not recommending to fund the Ventura County Community Development Corporation's request, because the down payment assistance that is required to make a market-rate unit affordable to a low-income unit exceeds the proposed down payment assistance. In addition, staff is proposing to fund the city's owner-occupied rehabilitation program in the amount of $100,000, and the city's affordable housing property acquisition program in the amount of $171,855. It can be used to buy vacant land or residential unit if combined with other sources. And lastly, staff recommends allocating available funding of $62,046 for program administration and fair housing. This slide provides an overview of the action plan process. We begin with the sub-recipient applications deadline in January, followed by a preliminary funding allocations public hearing on March 28th. Since that public hearing, HUD has published the funding allocations, and staff worked with Veronica Taman Associates in preparing the draft action plan to include the recommended funding allocations that were just presented. And the draft action plan was made available for a 30-day public comment period, starting on May 28th and ending on June 26th. No public comment were received during that period. The next steps include the adoption of the action plan, followed by submission to HUD. Staff's suggested action is to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing submission to HUD of the fiscal year 2018-19 CDBG action plan for CDBG funds. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions?
No, good. Good job.
Mr. Kildy? Oh, no questions. Okay, thank you. What are the wishes of the council?
Public.
Oh, this is a public hearing. We're all forgetting that. This is a public hearing, and I do have cards. Kathy Terry?
Good afternoon, or evening. I am the program manager for the Long Term Care Ombudsman Program, and I was asked to come and to speak to you and let you know about the hard work that the volunteers for the ombudsman program do. Through their efforts for the city of Camrio, they have made over 800 visits to the skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities here in this city. And with those efforts, they have, we have formally filed and solved over 100 complaints during fiscal year 2016-2017. The most important thing, though, that is accomplished by our regular visits to facilities is complaints don't have to be filed because they don't, things don't escalate to that level. There's an ombudsman program in every county of every state in the United States, and there is a federal mandate to visit annually, but in Ventura County, we visit skilled nursing facilities unannounced, unscheduled, on a weekly basis. And we visit assisted living facilities at least once a month, unannounced, unscheduled. They don't know we're coming, which means that situations are not allowed to escalate to the level that they do in other parts of the country, and we're very proud of that. I tell my volunteers, even if they don't have exciting saves at times, they're preventing from saves being needed to be solved, because those facilities never know when they're coming. The ombudsman will say, "Oh, it must be about that time for the annual survey, because the facilities are smelling better and there's more staff." They know when licensing's coming. They don't know when we're coming, and we come too often for them, too, to get in too bad a shape. We have, we did over 40 preplacement calls. One of the services we offer is individuals who are considering facility placement or don't know what to do to protect a loved one can call our office, and we are happy to spend time giving them the information they need so that they can make the right placement or choice for their loved ones. I'm very proud of the work of the Long Term Care Ombudsman Program. We have a number of resident of ombudsmen who live in the city of Camrio. Some of our ombudsmen have been with us for upwards of 26 years, because once they take on this type of a responsibility, they don't want to give it up. It's very meaningful, and our residents are greatly served. Sixty percent of seniors in skilled nursing facilities have no one visiting or advocating for them, so the ombudsman may be the only person who comes in and is that extra set of eyes and ears for those residents. So I, we do appreciate the support of the city of Camrio and ask you to continue to support the work that we do.
And I hope you saw that we did get more money than we thought, and so you will be getting the amount you requested.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And we appreciate the hard work that all of your volunteers do in the city. Mr. Kilday?
Yes, just, if you do see an issue that needs to be addressed, how do you go about addressing that?
We are what's called express wish advocates, and our number-one mandate really is to empower residents and give them the strength and the background to understand how to resolve issues at their level if possible, because we know even if we are in there weekly and monthly, we're not there every day. And so they are so fearful of retaliation. But if we hear of an issue, a resident brings it to our attention, or we observe something that is concerning, we will, with the resident's permission, if possible, they may have dementia, so then we go to their responsible party. They don't have a responsible party, we get permission to act on their behalf. But with their permission, we will try to solve things at the lowest level. So maybe go to the staff, see what can be changed at that level. If the facility is not agreeable to that type of a solution, and they typically are, because they'd rather deal with us than licensing, but if they aren't, then we can file it at the formal level, and report it to the Department of Public Health, or the Department of Social Services, law enforcement, the Department of Justice, the Medi-Cal Fraud Bureau. So we can take it as high as we need to, to solve an issue. But the most important thing is to get the residents' buy-in and get their permission, because they are so fearful of retaliation.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
You know, one thing I was surprised about, when you said sixty percent have no visitors, no guests, because my mom was in one before she died, and I saw it was high, but I didn't know it was that high. Had nobody visiting them.
That's right. And they, and so many families, due to the changing family structure, there's so much alienation and issues within families, with stepfamilies, and just the way the family has changed and evolved over the decades has really, has quite an impact on the quality of life for our seniors.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Steve Dwyer?
Thank you, Mayor Craven and council, I'm Steve Dwyer, I'm the executive director with Habitat for Humanity here in Ventura County. I am a Thousand Oaks resident. Since initiating our home repair program six years ago, in response to what was an increasing request to use our construction skills and volunteers, not for our more well-known program of building affordable homes, but to provide residents who own their own home, but need some sort of home repair or update, so that they can live safely and securely in a home that they own, we have only seen overall across the county the requests for these types of repairs to increase. Our typical client is over the age of 70, owns their home, often outright, and yet lives on social security, and in that calculation then can't afford a repair or an update to their home, that I think we would all agree would allow a good community investment, that they would be able to stay in that home for as long as possible, so that they don't have to shift their location. The typical scope that we provide are things like energy-efficient window replacements, step and flooring repair for mobility, and to remove trip hazards in the home, critical plumbing and electrical repair. And this year in Camarillo, we even did a roof replacement, because we simply had a homeowner with, it was raining in her living room. And so it was these funds that allowed us to provide that kind of support of a fairly high-dollar value, but a tremendous personal value to that resident, so that she could continue to live in a safe and secure environment. Over the past six years, we've now provided over 120 home repairs across the county, and 44 of those have been right here in Camarillo. And I mention that because as a ratio, that is much greater than the population of Camarillo to the overall county, and it is a testament to your commitment to your residents in providing these funds, so that Habitat and other agencies can provide these types of services to your residents. So I want to thank you personally, on behalf of our board and the residents that we support, I want to thank you, and I want to give a special thanks to David Moen-Oksana, because these types of contracts and the HUD documentation is not always easy, and it actually makes it possible for us to support more residents, because they are very good at what they do in helping us work with the documentation and the reimbursement processes. So thank you very much for your continued support.
Thank you.
Your honor, real quick.
Mr. Morgan?
I know several at Del Norte that you've done, done a good job accordingly. I have had no complaints from those folks, and they, in fact, they've told me you guys did a good job. Is that typical of what normally you receive, those kinds of responses?
Absolutely, Mr. Morgan. I can't think of another example, other than the situation you again heard about tonight, and I'm sorry about that. Of all the repairs across the county, I can't think of a single homeowner, other than the one you continue to hear about, where we have a resident who complains about critical services to their home that are done for their benefit without the request or expectation of repayment. This is a gift, and a gift to the resident, and an investment in, by you all and your counterparts in other cities, into the housing stock, if you will, of your community. And it's an unfortunate situation, but no, we've had no other complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lohanna Almanza, sorry about that.
Good evening all. My name is Lohanna Almanza, I am a supervisor at 211 Call Center, and I was asked by my director, who could not attend, to come forward and thank you for the support that you have given us in our services. It's been about a year that we had now provide a new program, a new entryway for those that come forward, expressing that they are homeless in the past year. And about 98 of callers that we've had from this city present themselves as at risk for being homeless. About 130% as currently being homeless. And we try to assist them any way as best as we can, that population is unfortunately very difficult to communicate with, they do have a lot going on, not the most reliable form of communication, so when we do have the opportunity to speak with them, engage with them, we're very happy to support them any way we can. Recently, we did have one of our callers who was unfortunately left in a very difficult situation, her spouse and her nine-month-old child were living with her parents, and unfortunately the parents had problems themselves, substance abuse, and took all her items, including her vehicle. They had no way of identifying themselves, and unfortunately, identification is very huge for any type of service. One of our specialists thankfully was able to identify through a text message, since we now provide that type of service, that her situation seemed a little odd and strange, and she was able to call out to her, heard about her situation, and was able to advocate a little bit for her, and actually communicate with the police department, who was able to actually go out and see her. She was having a very difficult time, even providing food for her child, since she had no transportation or any way of getting around. And that's wonderful to hear, not just from our part, but being able to communicate with other providers, other agencies, other members of this community, and we thank you for that support that you have provided us, so we can continue supporting this community as well, and its members. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We also have a nonverbal comment card from Teresa Pavin, it says, Camarillo City Council, I think Livingston Memorial would like to thank the Camarillo City Council for their support of Livingston's subsidized care program. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the city council on this item? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing, and now I'll ask for the wishes of the council.
Your honor, I'll move to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing submission to HUD of the FY 2018-19 CDBG action plan for CDBG funds.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously with Mr. Tremblay absent because of a conflict. Next on the agenda is a decision by the Camarillo Sanitary District, the Camarillo City Council, and the successor agency of the five-year capital improvement plan, item 18B for the city, item 8B for the sanitary district, and item 8A for the successor agency. Too bad they couldn't all be the same number.
Thank you, Mayor Craven. Principal Engineer Ken Matsuka will provide a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council, my name is Ken Matsuka, Public Works. Tonight, we're here to discuss the adoption of the final fiscal year 2018 to 2023 Capital Improvement Plan. The preparation of the CIP document is a many-month-long process. We presented the CIP to the council at a study session in March of this year. We also presented the CIP to the Planning Commission for a general plan conformity review in May 2018. And the budget study session in early June was another time the CIP budget was discussed. Tonight, we're here to discuss the adoption of the five-year CIP. As you can see on this map, our projects are throughout the city. There's 111 total projects. Tonight, for the benefit of those who haven't seen our CIP in previous presentations, we'll briefly discuss our new projects that were added this year, changes to the CIP since the study session, and highlighted projects. This is a list of our new projects that was added to the CIP this year. There's 15 projects, including the projects with phases. Next, we'll go over the changes to the CIP since the study session. The MetroLink undercrossing. This project is to construct a pedestrian undercrossing tunnel to improve access at the MetroLink station. The schedule was moved out two years to allow further discussion with the council through a study session on how to best move forward with the project. The ramp and bike trail improvements project. This project was formerly known as a Wickford Place to Village Commons Bike Trail Connector. The project was no longer desired by the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, so the project will be removed from the CIP. As this project is grant-funded from a TDA Article III grant from VCTC, the grant funds for the project will be, need to be returned to VCTC in an amount of $194,306, and that includes interest. Next are highlighted projects. We've discussed the pavement management plan a couple times this year. The projects that we generate include the asphalt overlay and slurry seal projects, as recommended by the pavement management plan. The budget shows a total of $5 million for these projects. The map shows the completed streets in black, and other colors show the planned work. We anticipate completing the list of streets one year earlier than originally anticipated, and that being 2021 versus 2022. The Railroad Quiet Zone project will install improvements at the railroad crossings at Upland and Adolfo. The improvements will improve safety, and trains approaching the crossings will not need to sound their horns. Staff is currently selecting a design consultant, and will return to council in a couple of months to award design contract. The North Pleasant Valley Desalter Project will construct a groundwater treatment plant, three new monitoring wells, one new production well, rehabilitation of existing wells, and a new pipeline to connect the desalter. The project will help reduce the city's reliance on imported water, and the current status of the property for the facility is currently being purchased by the city, and the design of the project is nearly complete. Construction for the project is anticipated to begin by the end of this year. We have time for questions.
Any questions?
We've been through this thing so many times, I think we-
That's right. We dissected it at our March meeting.
Very good.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Do we have any cards on this item? There are no cards on this item, is there anybody who would like to speak to us on this item? I'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, should we all have opened our public hearings?
Yes, you might as well do that, so.
All right, let me open the hearing for Camarillo Sanitary District, and ask for the record, are there any speakers for this public hearing? All right, hearing none.
And my question had been for both the successor agency and the city council. So we've all closed our public hearings, is there any discussion? What are the wishes of the council?
For the city council, adopt a resolution approving the five-year 2018-2023 Capital Improvement Program.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for the city council, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Tremblay?
And with regard to Camarillo Sanitary District, I'm not sure I formally closed the public hearing, but I'll close it now. I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll adopt a resolution approving a five-year 2018 to 2023 Capital Improvement Program for the Camp Sand District.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that's adopted on a 5-0 vote.
And for the successor agency, is there a motion?
Move the approval of staff's recommendation.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. And that ends the business for the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, so I will now close that meeting. Next on the agenda are departmental items. City Council, community event funding, item 19A. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, mayor, members of the city council, you have before you tonight, the community event funding included in the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. The city council policy Guidelines for City Support of Community Events was established for funding community events presented by nonprofit organizations or other governmental agencies. The policy does include language that city council members will not participate in the review or discussion or vote of proposed funding for any organization on which they serve as director or officer, but they may be present during the review, discussion, and vote. This year-
I thought it was not vote.
This year included in the, in the budget are five applications. A total of five applications were completed and provided for community event funding. All applications were from Camarillo-based organizations. Four organizations have active 501(c)(3) status. One organization is an independent special district under the State Public Resource Code of California. In addition, funding agreements will be executed by the city and the organizations receiving funding and/or in-kind support. Although these amounts were included in the budget, we will take action separately on each of these funding event actions, as there are council members who have, have to refrain from voting on the funding. But of the five applications, we have the Camarillo Arts Council with funding of $50,000 and in-kind support of $6,000, for a total of $56,000.
Is this where we recuse ourselves, because you are in the area that we-
I'm just going to list them, and then we'll take action separately on each of them. The Camarillo Fiesta Association in kind of, included in the budget of $27,000. The PVRPD Holiday Parade in kind of $13,300, and funding of $20,000. The SciArt Holiday Market Arts Alive and Gallery events for $29,750. And a new organization funding for Camarillo Wings Association for the Wings Over Camarillo Air Show, Car Show, and Festival, of in-kind support of $5,000 and funding of $10,000, for a total of $15,500. Again, that's five organizations that are included in the FY 18-19 budget.
So at this point, we will take these five, oh, first, are there any questions? Okay, because we have different council members who cannot vote on certain- Because we have different council members who cannot vote on certain things because of our policy, but they do not have to leave the room. The first one, we will take them individually. So the first one is the Camrio Arts Council, community event funding.
Your Honor, I do need to recuse myself from this event because I am a member of the board. Of course, we have no personal financial gain, but we are on the board in accordance to our policy.
Right.
I'm also going to repeat that. I'm also on the board, and so I'll recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. So that leaves three of us who are on that, who will be able to vote on that. Is there a motion? Yes.
I'll make the, go ahead, Tony, do you have a question?
No, I was simply going to make the, I was going to make a motion, but you do that. I was simply going to make the comment that this item, together with the other four items, were extensively reviewed during the council's April 11, 2018 study session.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the Camrio Arts Council community event funding in the amount of $56,000 to be included in the city's general fund budget and authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries three yeses, two who are abstaining because of City Council policy. Item number two, Camrio Fiesta Association, community event funding.
Your Honor, I'm also going to have to recuse myself from this because I'm on the board of the Camrio Fiesta Association.
Okay. Are there any questions on this one? Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll approve the Camrio Fiesta, I'm sorry, let me try that again. I'll approve the Camrio Fiesta Association community event funding in the amount of $27,000, to be included in the city's general fund budget and authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries four yeses, with Mr. Morgan abstaining because of City Council policy. Third one, approve Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District, community event funding.
Your Honor, I will move to approve the Pleasant Valley Recreation
and Parks District's community event funding in the amount of $33,300 to be included in the city's general fund budget and authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Fourth one, Studio Channel Islands Art Center, community event funding.
Your Honor, I move to approve the Studio Channel Islands Art Center community event funding in the amount of $29,750 to be included in the city's general fund budget and authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Fifth, approve Camrio Wings Association, community event funding.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the Camrio Wings Association, community event funding in the amount of $15,500 to be included in the city's general fund and authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. On the next one, I have a financial conflict of interest because I own property that it was, is within 500 feet of the trolley stop. So I will, by state law, have to leave the room on this, and...
I will as well have to leave the room on this because I have, I rent a building within 500 feet of the trolley stop.
So I will turn the gavel over to the past mayor, Mrs. McDonald.
Can I, can I ask one, before you leave? Can I ask a question on the last one that we just did? And it isn't a question on what we took action on. But for the public's benefit, the Fourth of July is another event that we help fund. Where would they find that in, in the budget and approval process?
It's included in the budget, as are these amounts. However, these amounts are specifically to fund outside organizations.
And because we pay for it directly to the vendor, that's why we don't see it here?
Right, it's not, it's not technically part of this policy program.
I just wanted that to be out there because that was a question that came up. Where's the Fourth of July? Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're on to the next one, sorry. And so could we have a staff report on this item, please?
Yes. This action will adopt the trolley budget within the Transit Fund for fiscal year 2018-19 and 2019-20. This action is taken separately. The trolley budget is included in this year's two-year budget cycle. In 1819, $237,000, and in 1920, $248,000. The trolley is funded with FTA grant and other operating transfers from the general fund. The amounts are separated through this process to allow for a separate vote. These amounts, as I mentioned, are included in the Transit Fund. The Transit Fund fiscal year budget for 1819 is 3.39 million, and for 1920 is 2.78 million. The trolley budget includes contractual services and fuel costs.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. Do we no longer have any of our partners in funding the trolley?
I'm not sure.
Yes, we do. Currently, as previously approved with two separate agreements, one with the university, Channel Islands University, and, and they do contribute $25,000 a year on a quarterly basis. They're invoiced, and they pay that amount. The other agreement is with the, through the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, with the community sponsorships with the intent to pay up to what is collected from the different contributors with a proposed $25,000 a year also. The average collections have been running about $4,000 per quarter from that group, so not quite hitting the $25,000 a year. But we do collect as those, as those funds are contributed.
So this, that would offset the cost of the program as listed here? Or is that over and above the cost that we see here?
So the total cost is reflecting that other operating revenue of $50,000 is those...
That's what's in there?
Yes, those two, right.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the FY's 2018-19 and 2019-20 trolley budget.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. And that does pass with three yeses, and Mr. Kildee and Mayor Craven abstaining. And it's passed the gavel night.
This whole night?
Okay. Okay. So that item is finished. Next is Item C, GASB 54, Commitment of Fund Balance. And before we start, I guess we should tell the public what GASB is.
That's the Government Accounting Standards Board. And this standard provides for the commitment and basically the standards that we follow for that commitment of, of fund balance.
Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes. So the Government Accounting, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 54 requires a categorization slash classification of fund balance in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is called the CAFR. City Council may commit for specific purposes by resolution of fund balance. As of June 30, 2018, fund balance is projected to be $59.8 million. Currently, the council has a reserve policy that it adopted, 50% of operating expenditures and transfers. That 50% goal represents $20.9 million. In addition, other commitments to fund balance include economic development, $11.5 million; commitment for natural disaster recovery of $10 million; commitment for CalPERS rate stabilization for $5 million; and a commitment for Camrio Springs debris barrier remediation maintenance for $200,000. So those other commitments total 26.7 million. So in total commitments, including the reserve policy goal of $20.9 million, that would be a commitment of $47.6 million of that $58 million of projected fund balance, or $59 million of projected fund balance. Council would take action to adopt commitments, and at year-end, when the city prepares its financial report, we would reflect these balances as committed fund balance in our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Mr. Kildee?
Jeanie, it's about $47.5 million. What was the, the balance on that? What was the, the number that was in that fund?
So fund balance is projected to be $59.8 million.
Okay.
So of that $59.8 million, based on the commitments as identified on this slide, $47.6.
So we still have?
About 12 million, 12 million of unassigned fund balance.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the term we would use.
Good, about 12 million in that, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, Mr. Tremblay?
Comment?
Comment?
I just think it's important to note for the record that the council has, has discussed these commitments extensively, has discussed them within the context of GASB 54 commitments, and also with respect to reserve fund levels and what are, what are appropriate. So, and that occurred on June 9 during our study session, and I know in a recent meeting. I will make a motion, if it's appropriate...
Certainly.
...to adopt a resolution to commit $47,484,000 of the projected fund balance of the general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Is, is that the amount? Because that's different than is on the agenda.
Yeah, it's different.
37.87.
I think the other one was rounded in.
47.5.
Well, I have...
That says 47.6, and here it just...
You said 467, and it's 47,687 on the agenda. Is there a different amount in the packet?
No.
What's that?
The agenda report, it says 484.
Right.
And so does the resolution.
Okay.
So the slides just rounded up.
Well, I was going by this.
And the agenda's...
Sorry.
Rounded it up, then.
Agenda has a few thousand off. Okay, so that's the number you read. Is there a second?
I second it, yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. And we do need to clear things up because some people read some things and some people read other things. So please vote.
Whoops.
Motion carries unanimously.
There it is.
You didn't mean to vote for it?
No.
Oh.
It turned yellow, I looked, it was yellow. Okay, go ahead.
Look green to me. Next is budget for the fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020. And this is jointly with the Camrio Sanitary District. So could we have that staff report, please?
Mayor, members of the City Council. Just as a reminder, you did discuss this at great length at a study session on June 9. Staff is now going to provide an overview of that budget in a much shorter presentation. So each year, the, the City Council adopts goals and objectives for the coming fiscal year. Council's goals and objectives form the basis upon which various programs and projects are budgeted for in the coming fiscal years. As I mentioned, we did discuss the goals and objectives of the City Council as a reminder on, on that June 9 study session. Overall, for fiscal year 1819, the expenditures total for all city funds and enterprise funds, $146.1 million. The enterprise funds represent $80 million of that figure. That includes the Camrio Sanitation District, the water funds, the transit funds, and the solid waste funds. The general fund represents a good portion of that funding as well. And included in that is your internal service funds, your capital improvement funds, your debt service funds, and your special revenue funds. In the second year of the year-two-year budget, the expenditures are at $121 million. That decrease is primarily as a result of a large desulter project, which is programmed in year one. So there is a decline in that total, and that's primarily the reason for the decline in that total. So as you can see, the enterprise funds represent $50 million in that, of that figure in that second year. Again, that's the Sanitary District, the water funds, the transit funds, and the solid waste funds. So what I'd like to focus on first is the, the general fund operations. And the general fund, overall, we'll be discussing a little bit of the revenues and those highlights and the expenditures. But what I want to point out is that for fiscal year 1819, the revenues over expenditures in that fund are just under $500,000 in year one. And in year two, the revenues over expenditures are at $370,000. So you're always looking to have your revenues exceed your expenditures, and for both fiscal years, we have balanced the budget. So what I'd like to do now is discuss the revenues in, in, for each fiscal year, and then we'll discuss the expenditures for each of those fiscal years, just the highlights. So general fund revenues in year one, we do have sales tax of $14.5 million. That's just a modest increase from the current year. We have property taxes of $14.1 million. A slight increase over the current year for new construction that is projected. Transient occupancy tax, or TOT, or hotel tax, as we like to call it, at $2.5 million are projected to grow at just about $1.68 over the, over the current year. Building permits are still strong, slightly lower than the current year, but at $1.6 million, they are projected down from what, what the activity is, is this current year. And in addition, in revenues, we have a transfer from gas tax fund, which does reflect a change in how we're accounting for streets, the streets' costs, which are now going to be accounted for in the general fund. So in year two, sales tax is at $14.7. Again, pretty steady, just a slight increase over the 18-19-year property tax, which represents 34% of, of our general fund revenues, at 14.8% or $14.8 million. That, that does show about a 4.6% increase over the prior year. TOT, slightly higher, again, at $2.6 million over the prior year. And building permits, about the same, at $1.5 million, just a 6.25% change from the prior year. Again, transfer in from the gas tax fund for streets activities. So 1819 general fund expenditures, we, we, in total, are at $41.7 million. The changes from the current year are primarily in city administration. We do have some increases for internal service fund charges to all departments in, in this case, for improvements to City Hall. Basically, we're spreading those costs to all departments, and throughout the departments, there will be an increase in their operating costs as a result of that. We have some increases in admin services for library operations. That is for some networking equipment, copiers, and community room sound system replacement. In economic development, there's a decrease of 24%. That's a result of the, the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan that was budgeted and, and actually completed in fiscal 1718. In building and safety, we have a decrease for cost for, related to the projected decrease in building activity. So we have a decrease in revenues, therefore, you're going to have a decrease in cost of expenditures. Public Works looks like a 46% increase. It's primarily as a result of $2.2 million of revenues or expenditures... It's primarily as a result of $2.2 million of revenues or expenditures now being accounted for in the general fund, being funded with gas tax monies. It also includes a new position and a 1% adjustment. As far as general fund transfers, we do have that transfer in from the gas tax funds, as I previously mentioned. Lighting landscaping, $2.5 million is what we transfer out to the lighting landscaping fund. This is an increase of about $275,000 for increased operating expenditures for Mission Oaks and the 101 Flynn improvements. We have a transfer to the transit fund of $843,000. This is an increase of about $217,000 due to an increase in contract services and a reduction of air quality funds. For the second year of the two-year budget, really not much of a significant increase in operating expenditures, a very slight decrease, in fact, of 3, just 0.3%, with operating transfers of 5.2. That is an increase over the prior year. There's a $1.4 million transfer to the railroad quiet zone being funded with general fund monies. So for total appropriations in year two of the budget of $42.78 million. And the transfers in from gas tax of 1.4. And transfers out, the most significant, again, are to the lighting landscaping district. In year two, there's a $200,000 increase. And for capital improvements, as I mentioned, the railroad quiet zone project of $1.4 million. The gas tax fund, just to point that the revenues received in the gas tax fund are approximately $1.8 million in revenues. And those monies are transferred to the general fund primarily to fund streets division costs. In year two, there's a transfer to the general fund for those streets costs, but there's also a transfer to capital projects for the pavement management project in that CIP program. In 1819, we have several enterprise fund budgets. The solid waste fund expenses reflect a 7.8 or 7.48 increase to cover increases of a CPI and a 5% increase in tipping fees. For the water funds, there are several water funds, but the reclaimed water fund, there is a $1.2 million increase due to electrical improvements to the reclaimed water pumps and design work for the new reclaimed water storage tank. The water capital projects fund, $31 million. Again, the disalter project is the big ticket item in that category in year one of the two-year budget. And in the sanitary district capital improvement fund, we do have expenses for the pump station number three rehab, the Lewis Road to Flynn Road sewer, and the SCADA system upgrades and improvements per SSMP. In year two of the budget for enterprise funds, solid waste fund reflects an anticipated 3.4% rate increase to cover cost of the CPI and a 1% tipping fee. Transit fund expenses decrease due to lower fleet purchases, which were programmed in year one of the two-year budget. And in the water conservation credit, there is a decrease based on anticipated participation in the final year of the program. And then the capital projects fund, we do have project costs included for infrastructure repairs and advanced metering infrastructure, the AMI project. And in the sanitary district capital fund, we have expenses for the flood improvements at wastewater treatment plant and improvements per SSMP. Also included in these budgets, as previously discussed, is $51.6 million of total planned projects in the capital improvement program. These, again, represent the largest item is the disalter project. We do have transportation projects of $6 million, programmed redevelopment projects of $100,000, building and grounds projects of $2.3 million, storm drain project, $0.8 million, and sanitary projects, or sanitary district projects of $8.3 million. And in year two of the capital improvement plan, we have $28.4 million in projects programmed. Transportation projects represent the largest percentage of $13.8 million. We do have three redevelopment projects, building and grounds projects of $2 million, storm drain projects of just over $300,000, sanitary district projects of $10.6 million, and water projects of $1 million. We did have some supplemental changes as a result of, after the last presentation at study session. These are just some cleanup items for fiscal year 1718 to some capital projects, basically that didn't make it into, were in the capital improvement program, but they didn't make it into the budget pack that you were provided at study session. And we had an adjustment to the transfers to the transit fund from available fund balance. Study session recommended changes. We did adjust the city attorney's budget and decrease that by $3,000 for some publications that were already included in the city clerk's budget. And we did remove the economic development strategic plan-related costs of $100,000 in each of those years. Additionally, as mentioned in the CIP presentation, there was a project that was removed related to the TDA 3 funding. And so that project has resulted in several adjustments to the revenues and the transfers between funds to fund that project. As we do with it each year, we do complete a five-year general fund forecast. And as you can see, we're still in a positive unassigned fund balance over the five-year timeframe. As I do each year, remind council, this does include funding in the budget for the pavement management program at $5 million a year. And as we do each year, we do look at the reserve requirements of each of the funds and we are in compliance with that city council policy number 3.05, based on staff's review of the reserve requirements, the balances of those reserves, and then a plan to provide for any negative reserves or reserves that are below the threshold. Staff's available to answer questions. And first, I would like to say thank you to the staff, to finance staff that's worked very hard to put this budget together, and all the departments that participate and endure the budget process each year.
And just for anybody out there listening, I need to say that our discussion tonight will be fairly short compared to the four hours we spent discussing it on June 9, in detail, page by page. So, other questions?
I have a comment.
No questions? Okay, Mr. Kildee for a comment.
Yeah, I'm amazed at the graphics. Every time we go through this, the graphics just get better and better, at least for me. And it becomes, this isn't an easy process, but it becomes easier and easier for me to follow this process here. A lot of it has to do with the graphics, but also the staff and how, you know, how well they do at explaining a budget this big and of this magnitude. And to do it as concisely as they do it, I think is amazing. And I've been on several boards, and I know everybody else up here has been on several boards too, and I've been on boards that have been fiscally solvent, and I've been on boards that have not been fiscally solvent. And I just am so impressed with this city and what they do with their money. And it doesn't come easy. This is a really, really hard lift. And I know all the council members spent countless hours going through these numbers along with our staff. And I want to thank them for that. It doesn't go unnoticed, but I especially want to thank the citizens of Camarillo, supporting us budgetary for what we do. And we try to give back to our city to the best of our abilities. And again, the staff works countless hours on that. The council works countless hours on that. And hopefully, we can see the fruits of all the labors here. So this was, it wasn't the easiest one, but as far as the process and following it, following the numbers here, due to the increase and the benefit of all of the optics here, it was somewhat more palatable, me going through this. And I just want to thank everybody that makes this happen. And again, I just want to reiterate, it doesn't come easy. There's countless hours on a lot of people's plate that make this process work.
Mr. Tremblay.
I have a comment and a question, but the comment first. I'll just echo what Mr. Kildee had to say. This budget represents an extraordinary amount of work by finance department staff and other departmental staff, and we really appreciate it. It's clearly outlined. Goodness knows, we've talked about it at length, but I really want to pay you tribute for how you do this process. It's excellent. One thing I just want to make sure of, and I think I'll direct the question to Mr. Norman, on the slide relative to the economic development strategic plan, with that $100,000 going out, we have not forgotten about economic development. And perhaps, Mr. Norman, you could articulate, that is an ongoing process with respect to our economic development strategic plan.
I'm sorry, what is that?
I think that.
No, I understand. Yes, we are in the process of finishing the economic development strategic plan. It is out for public comment at this time. It'll come back for our council approval at a later meeting.
Right. I didn't want anybody to think we had forgotten about it. Thanks. Concludes my comment.
I'll just.
Motion?
I'll make a motion, but I also want to echo the thank yous and a thank you to everyone who participates. It's budget, and especially the two-year budgets.
I'm just, Your Honor, glad that they put up with us, number one, trying to include all of our concerns and what we'd like to see as a council. You've done a great job of putting this into writing, so everybody can understand it.
Finishing my comments.
Yeah.
Adding to what Mr. Tremblay was talking about, the economic development, one of the reasons that we didn't leave it in the budget per se was, is we didn't know exactly what it was going to be yet. Yeah, but you're right, we didn't forget about it, but sometimes you don't want to put things in a budget when you can't explain what it is, so.
We're going to be talking about that.
Right, so that was the reason for that. But as you can see, we have enough money that we'll be able to appropriate at the appropriate time.
I just have one comment. Every year, I'm more amazed at the difference than when I first got here. And not the first budget, we thought we had $24 million at that time. But the second budget, we knew we didn't, and it's done nothing but gone up since then. And that's mainly because the city council set a lot of policies to be frugal and the staff has complied very well.
If you take that just one step further, and you look out at our city, you know, it's a beautiful city, there's things left that we can do.
We haven't sacrificed.
We really haven't. Our streets are the best in the county. We still can spend $5 million a year on our paving projects, our beautification projects, our medians, so many of the things we've done. And a lot of it goes to staff. I think of some of the big public works projects. Why could we do them? Because you went out and worked and found grants to help match our funds and really stretch our dollars. And I think that's shown in here, that we can end up doing all of that and still have some money left, and it's putting all those pieces together. So I thank you for all of that, because it really does make a difference.
Mike?
Now it's my turn, huh?
Now it's your turn.
I couldn't figure out if you were stopped or not.
Oh, I took a breath.
You halted, yes. And I thought you were through. So I apologize.
That's okay.
But sometimes you do that, and I don't know if you're through or not.
You didn't wait to be recognized by the chair, Mr. Morgan.
She didn't just now either, just now talked, okay? I raised my hand. Anyway, what I want to say is that in those days that we were talking about, no staff got punished. No staff got, not punished, but got any reduced benefits, reduced salaries, nothing. We did a job.
But two lost their jobs.
We did our job. I know, those are the ones that did it. But anyway, excuse me, guys, I'm sorry, but I guess I shouldn't have cut in, huh? Yeah, anyway, we, no one got punished, our own staff got not punished, suffered any benefit cuts or any kind of lowered salaries, nothing. We made a commitment to that. We cut our salaries by 500, some of us did. We hadn't made 500 then, a month.
We weren't getting 500.
And we cut it. We cut that out, a bunch of us. So it just, we cut to the nubs without sacrificing our staff. And that's been what the policy, this city's been ever since I've been here, to make sure we're still run well. Of course, we made some changes to make sure it run well, but it was a time. I'm really glad where we are. That's why that little surplus up there, I'd love to see it. At $25 million, we thought we had. You should see, I saw one councilman cry back there, because when they told us the whole thing's gone, you're going, what? So we had to start from there, solving things. Anyway, I'll get off the bandwagon.
I just wanted, because beautification was brought up, and I don't think we've given proper credit for that. There was a council member named Tad Bowen, who ran on getting Camarillo a beautification plan. And our landscape master plan, he was a one-term council member, he asked the council at his first council meeting to start working on it. It was adopted at his last council meeting, four years later, and staff has worked hard to implement the landscape master plan ever since. And that's why we have beautiful streets and medians according to the plan we have. So I just.
The only problem we had.
Up there in heaven, I hope Tad's hearing the recognition he's getting.
The only problem we had, Charlotte, is when we started cutting down the Ficus Benjaminas, oh, gosh, we got it from the public. But now they know, it looks so much better.
Mr. Tremblay. Yes. This is for the city.
Yes. I'll move that the council adopt a resolution approving the FY 2018, 2019, and FY 2019, 20 budgets, authorizing appropriations for fiscal year 2018, 19, and fiscal year 2019, 20, and amending the fiscal year 2017/18 budget.
Second.
The motion is second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
I think we would be ready to hear a motion with respect to the sanitary district.
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the FY 2018, 19, and 2019, 20 budgets, authorizing appropriations for FY 2018, 19, and 2019, 20, and amending the fiscal year 2017, 18 budget.
Second the motion.
All right, we thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Mr. Tremblay.
I'm sorry, that's adopted unanimously. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the Camarillo Sanitary District committee.
And if I've gone through this list, this confusing list today correctly, that's the end of city council business, so I will adjourn that meeting. It's only 9:07.